It's six o'clock and we will call the meeting to order. If you will all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
Good evening. In honor of the Fourth of July, I thought I would quote one of our founding fathers, Benjamin Franklin. He said, "Every man is of common right and by the laws of God, a free man and entitled to the free enjoyment of liberty." And that was Ben Franklin. Thank you, Lord. We live in a country where we are free to express our views and others can't express their views. Even if we do not agree with such views, we ask for guidance to make wise decisions. We pray for protection of all our employees and the citizens of our blessed city. Amen.
Thank you. Mike, if you'll call the roll, please.
Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Blavin.
Here.
Councilman Schleck.
Present.
Councilman Valeris has asked to be excused. Councilman Lloyd?
Here.
Pro Tem Lally?
Here.
And Mayor McLeod?
Here, thank you.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Marcos. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. I have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of June fourteenth.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Blavins. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Organizational, yes.
Good evening, Mayor Council. This is Allen Park. I want to make sure I speak into the microphone and so everybody can hear. For the street permit program, the contractor is Hargrock Concrete. They have, as I said, the storm sewer pipes delivered. Those are the ones that have been placed there on Wick Road near Rosedale. That will be for work that will start after July fourth on Rosedale Boulevard. And that project area is from Moore Road to Wick Road. Once they're finished, they'll move over to Park Avenue from Champagne Road to Angelique Avenue, and then finally to Philomene Boulevard from Park Avenue to Colwell Avenue. The water main replacement program project for that is contractors Rico Exviding. They're planning to start the Wynona Avenue project, and that's from Champagne Road to E Course Road by the end of July. Savone Cement is finishing work on Buckingham Court. Not see that, I know. On Buckingham Court and Enterprise Drive. They will be moving to Wick Road next to work on the area between Lawrence Avenue and Vine Avenue. I believe, though, they're also going to have to catch an intersection at Ruth and Wick as well. So that will complete that whole section. We'll be concrete from Allen Road all the way to the junior high and we'll head to Vine. So it'll be nice. Al's Asphalt, they're scheduled to be in town starting tomorrow to pave the community park parking lot, and then they'll follow that up with a small portion of Gojona Avenue. There's a little section of gravel road, probably about two houses in length that'll be asphalt now, and it's going towards Tom Murray's goal of getting all the gravel roads paved, and we're working on that. We'll have Arnold coming up here shortly as well for the later in the season. We did receive a communication from M.D.O.T. recently about a permanent standby generator project that will be used to supply power to the pump station located near sixteen one oh five Southfield Road. I had to look that up because it didn't pop up as a common address, and it's actually the corner here of Roosevelt and Southfield Road. I actually think it shows up on this side of the biocity, but I think it's actually going to be on the other side of the biocity, and it's where the pump station's at. They're going to start that project here shortly. Actually, I apologize. They're going to start that project in the fall, and it's expected to be completed by next fall of twenty twenty-three. At the site, they'll have a generator installed and leveling pad. The leveling pad will be enclosed by a six-foot chain link fence and a three-string barbed wire on top. The generator runs during the monthly maintenance cycle, which will last up to about forty-five minutes. Otherwise, the generator would be just run when there's an outage, and the pumps need to operate. M.D.O.T.'s goal here is to help alleviate the detrimental impacts of flooding on our roadways. I was a little surprised. Again, I had to Google this one to see that address, and I figured this was actually going to be at Southfield Outer Drive, which is where we seem to have more issues, but that might be in the next phase. This is a multi-phase project. I think there was nineteen this time around, so we're one of the first of nineteen there. We've some really good news coming out of Lansing that was delivered to me by Chief Egan. Mothers Against Drug Driving honored four of the Allen Park Police Department officers at their Lifesavers Award Luncheon on Friday, June seventeenth, in Lansing. Officer Adam Begley had twenty-five operating while intoxicated arrests, O.W.I.s. Officer Chris Arnaldi had nineteen O.W.I. arrests. Officer Jared Knudsen had fourteen O.W.I. arrests. And then they also honored Lieutenant Bill Mihal, who was recognized for a career as being a leader, who was encouraged to shift to actively seek out drunk drivers to save lives. During his best year as an officer with this program, he had fifty-five arrests in the O.W.I. arrest program. Outstanding on that. A.P.P.D. is committed to M.A.D.'s mission of no more victims. Had a note in here also. Chief Egan says, you know, it's very difficult to name. This past twenty-two class season here was very difficult because we lost a young lady early in September to a drunk driver, and so we definitely need to all work together on that mission to meet M.A.D.'s goal of no more victims. I also had a nephew that was in a bad accident hit by a drunk driver. Fortunately, he was not in the car. Had he been in the car, he would not be here today, and that just happened over the Memorial Day weekend. So please, please think before you can handle it. Festivus Commission is planning the twenty-twenty-two Allen Park Street Fair for Friday, August fifth and Saturday, August sixth. This will be the fortieth anniversary. It is the list that's homecoming, and looking forward to seeing a lot of people come back to town for that great event. Want to congratulate the following employees that have either reached or will reach a milestone with the city. Shannon Davison in the Department of Public Services. She reached five years on June nineteenth. Justin McLaughlin in the Water Department. He'll reach five years on July fifth. And I just wanted to welcome these individuals here that have been hired to replace staff that has left the city recently. Brian Carroll in the D.P.S. Public Service Worker. He was hired May sixteenth. Isaac Wilson in the Water Department. He was hired June sixth. And Yariska? Yarissa Cardira Lozano is a part-time D.P.S. Water Clerk, and she was hired June twenty-first. She is also bilingual, is very helpful with the D.P.S. when we get the phone calls. I know we have a gentleman that comes in at the last council meeting, so she'll be able to help with those conversations a little bit and help me a little bit understand, speak Spanish a little bit better, I guess. That is everything I have.
Thank you. Does anyone have a motion to accept and file?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Anybody have questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Now we come to the public comments portion of tonight's meeting. Anyone may come forward and address council. If you would just provide your name and the street on which you live. You do not want to have the full address. You are limited to four minutes, and all we ask is that you be courteous.
Hello, I am Annette Prevo Mateko, and I've owned a business in Allen Park for almost thirty years at seventy-three thirty-three Allen Road. In light of the recent decision to not renew DDA Director Jennifer Kibbe's contract, I would like to know what the city has planned to increase business growth and increase customer traffic flow. I'm sure this was well thought out. I would just like to know if there's going to be anything spoken about it. I'm sure I'm not alone in saying that during the COVID shutdown, Ms. Kibbe was phenomenal. She and the DDA Board under her direction worked daily to keep Allen Park's small businesses open. She was instrumental in getting dedicated parking spaces for carryout, rewarding people for eating and shopping locally, and just as important, in my case, passing along grant opportunities and PPP loan information to all the small businesses to apply for and secure much needed funds to stay in business. What did the city do? Ms. Kibbe was always visible and approachable at all functions she helped to create and put in place over the last ten years she was here. She was not afraid to admit when something wasn't working and also not too proud to ask for help to get a job done. What is the city going to do to promote business growth in the Down River section? What is also going to happen to all the DDA funds that come from our business taxes? They are there for development of the downtown business district. Is there a plan to absorb the money into the general fund, or what is the plan for the money? Also, I want to know personally, is there procedures in place for new businesses to start up in Allen Park? Is it easy to follow? Is it welcoming? How does someone get started? I know from a fact, a friend of mine tried to start a business. It was very confusing. They gave up, went to Southgate. I just want to know if there's a strategic plan in place, and I'm sure I'm not the only one wondering. Thank you.
Good evening. I wanted to come and introduce myself to the council and to your viewing audience. My name is Ron Kokenda. I'm here at Balfour Avenue, this side of the creek. I'm a candidate for state representative in our new District Two, which is Allen Park, Lincoln Park, E Course, and the northern four precincts of Southgate. I'm running as an American First, Trump Republican, and I'm focusing heavily on the economy. Let me, I just want to kind of address a couple of comments toward the way I see my campaign orienting. The Republican Party, I think, once again, has to become the party of Lincoln, the party of the working man. I think that from an economic standpoint in this country, we need a fundamental change in orientation. I would call it new, but I don't think it really is new. It's something we've used historically, and we've been very successful historically when we've used it. I'm calling for the abolition of the Federal Reserve and a return to national banking. That is something that represents a shift from pumping out trillions to the too-big-to-fail institutions, to an institution that can rebuild our physical economy, including our commercial banking sector and our community banking sector, which I think have been severely damaged by the Fed. We used to have savings and loans in this country at one time. They no longer exist. The question is, how do we get the country producing? We've got to do a lot of unshoring. We've got to do a lot to secure our food supply. We've got to do a lot in terms of rebuilding our industrial base. I think this type of shift was used twice before in our history. Once with the First and Second National Bank, the first being Alexander Hamilton set up, and the second with Abraham Lincoln and his Greenback policy. We underwent, in both periods, a tremendous infrastructure development and industrialization. And I think anything short of this type of shift today is not going to solve. There's no Band-Aids. There's no short-term solutions to the type of economic crisis we face. We have not recovered from the two thousand seven, two thousand eight crash. The amount of money that's being pumped out into the system, I think, should be alarming to anyone. Anyway, this is the, I view my campaign here, of course, I'm in it to win, but I view it as something to basically educate this American First movement that is active throughout the country to this American system of economics, which is basically what has been lost. I mean, that's something that's been driven out of the country. We've got to revive it. So I'll keep my marks there. I'm sure I'm over my four minutes, and I thank you very much.
There's no one else coming forward. We will close the public comments and move on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of purchasing actions, claims, and accounts, and the payroll report. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by?
Motion.
Mr. Marcos.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Blavins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. That motion is carried. Resolutions. First resolution is to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two year-end budget. And in lieu of our treasurer, Finance Director, I will...
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is regarding the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two year-end budget amendments. The Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act, Public Act Two of nineteen sixty-eight, requires an amendment to adopt, to the adopted budget when it can be determined that the budget projections will be different than originally anticipated. Each June, Finance reviews the revenues and expenditures in order to develop an amended budget resolution to more closely reflect the actual operation cost and the use of cash reserves. Finance Director Amanda Words did attach a spreadsheet explaining what those changes were. I believe there's about twelve or fifteen total.
I have a motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Marcos. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. The motion is carried. Resolution two is to provide that the mayor and city council agree to the terms of the settlement and release agreement with the Great Lakes Water Authority for one-time reimbursement for repair to damages in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred and ninety dollars and forty-one cents. May I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Do you like to?
Yeah, I'd try to. This is regarding the, a couple months ago, there was a project to put in a pressure relief valve into an existing GLWA, Great Lakes Water Authority, meter pit. In order to do that, they tested the system to see how that would all coordinate out. Unfortunately, it resulted in a number of water main breaks. I believe immediately, we were about four in a matter of minutes. They were able to find, we were able to make contact with our, the town was able to make contact with that person. They were able to reverse what they were working on and not cause any further damage, although we did have quite a few more, sixteen total. So this is a, we sent over to them. They did accept this. Very rare, in my opinion, that GLWA would acknowledge an issue of this because I think it could be coming still pretty slow for them in the future with other communities, but this was a project that we were actually working with them. It actually will hopefully help us in the future because the PRB will help reduce those pressure spikes like this, and we hopefully won't have as many water main breaks in that district. So an unprecedented term, I would recommend this highly, and I think it goes back to show that we do have a really, really good working relationship with GLWA.
Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Has carried. And we move on to other business. Tonight, we have the third reading and public hearing of Proposed Ordinance Number Two dash twenty-two. May I have a motion to authorize the third reading of Proposed Ordinance Number Twenty?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Well, this is the attorney. Please do the third reading.
Third reading of Proposed Ordinance Number O-two dash two zero two-two. An ordinance of City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances amending Chapter Six, Animals, Article One, in general, by the repeal of Section Six dash twenty-one, feeding pigeons and seagulls prohibited, and readoption of Section Six dash twenty-one to prohibit the feeding of wild animals and birds, except the feeding of birds and squirrels by means of an elevated feeder.
Thank you. Well, we will open the public hearing portion related to this ordinance. Anyone wishing to come up and speak to this ordinance is free to do so at this point. No one is coming up. We will close the public hearing, and we will move on to the adoption of Ordinance Number Two dash twenty-two. May I have a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blavins.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Schleck. I will now call for a roll call vote.
Okay, Mayor, I have a motion by Councilman Blavins, supported by Councilman Schleck, for the adoption of Ordinance Number Two dash two thousand and twenty-two. An ordinance of the City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances amending Chapter Six, Animals, Article One, in general, by the repeal of Section Six twenty-one, feeding pigeons and seagulls prohibited, and the readoption of Section Six twenty-one to prohibit the feeding of wild animals and birds, except the feeding of birds and squirrels by means of an elevated feeder. Shall this ordinance pass? Councilman Blavins?
Yes.
Councilman Lally?
Yes.
Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
Councilman Marcos?
Yes.
Mayor McLeod?
Yes.
And Councilman Schleck?
Yes.
The yeses have it. This ordinance shall be declared adopted upon publication, which shall be done in a manner prescribed by law. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will move on to council comments, and this evening we will start with Councilman Marcos.
Thank you. Just wanted to recognize the Allen Park Police Department. Had an opportunity to go to the Safety Town Graduation. This is a program for pre-kindergartens kids coming into schools. It's a safety program, teaches them all about simple things like following the lights, the stop signs, crosswalks, all different types of things. And I want to really thank the school liaison officer, Mike Basile, and Chief Egan for following this and taking care of it. It's been thirty-two years now. And to thank them for their effort in keeping all of our kids safe and informed. Also wanted to thank Lauren Belak and Cindy Scalisi, the great job they did on the car show, and all the volunteers. It was a great show, had a great time, it was beautiful. And that's all I have to say, other than please, we appreciate you coming to the meetings, and we'd like to see more of you here. We appreciate you come, please come to our meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Tony?
Yes, ma'am. I want to thank you all for coming to the meeting tonight. I do want to special thank to the Chief Ken and Chief Egan. They really are changing Allen Park around. They're doing a heck of a job. Not only the chiefs, but all the departments that we have here in Allen Park. You guys are doing good, and keep up the good work. Thank you for you guys. I want to add to the deepest sympathy for Amanda's father-in-law that passed away. My condolences to the whole family. I want to congratulate to all the officers that received Lifesavers Award for outstanding job that you do and keep on doing. Thank you, and God bless you guys. Keep up the good work. I'd be remiss if I don't mention the steak cook out. Charlie reminded me. We have a steak cook out at the Knights of Columbus. That's a big juicy steak. It's about, what is it? So, no, I, New York strip. That's it. They got so many different ones here. I like the New York strip very best. And you get a New York strip with the baked potatoes salad, excellent, nice salad. And one of the guys that were at our volunteers that does a heck of a job on the salad, and garlic bread. And of course, if you want water and mixed drinks and a little bit of beer, you got to buy your own. But other than that, hope to see you guys over here. I'll be at tomorrow night, starts at five, they're eight. Usually about six o'clock, we're all gone. Sixty steaks goes like this quick. I hope it does tomorrow because on the Fourth of July, I've been coming along, it could be less and it could be more. People don't go out anymore because of gas prices, so they're going to come to the KFC, fill up on the gas there. Anyway, I'd be remiss if I don't say happy birthday to my son, Joe Lally. He's going to be forty years old the Fourth of July. God bless and good night.
Thank you, Tony. Dan?
I'm going to do my best to answer Annette's question, so if it's okay, I call you that. She's been fitting me with glasses since I was eleven years old, so. Yeah. Okay, so first off, I share a lot of your concerns. I think the DDA, just in the last ten years, I think the transformation that we've had in our downtown area has been tremendous. It's been tremendous, and we did a great job during the pandemic of making sure that we were keeping our businesses afloat, and the DDA was a huge part of that. So first off, the DDA is still going to be functioning as the DDA. I just spoke with Fred Frank, who chairs the DDA, before I came here today. He was meeting with some business owners, I think the Allen Park Eatery, about some issues that they have with some ordinances and helping them out. So the DDA, as it exists, is still going to be functioning. We are just going to be functioning in the meantime without an acting director. So, and that kind of goes to the second question, the DDA funds. The DDA funds still exist and cannot. They can't, the city can't do anything about them without the DDA Board's approval. So that is a separate pot of money that is completely separate, and so that money that is captured from taxes from the downtown development area is still going to that pool, and that money, if it's not going to be utilized in the next calendar year, it is going to be there to help encourage the downtown businesses because that is the purpose for that. So to the question of starting a business, I know from our last meeting that we had with the DDA, their plan that they had going forward, and granted, that might be changing, was to make it so that when you come to the City of Allen Park, that you have like a starter pack for what it is, like how it is that you're going to open it. So what ordinances do you need to know? What, you know?
Yes, through the DDA, not the city.
That is through the city, the DDA. I'm sorry, it's through the DDA.
Okay.
So that, not the city. So that is something that those funds, those funds are put aside for this year's budget to get that going so that when somebody wants to start a business in the City of Allen Park, they're able to get, pack it. This is Matt Baker's number because you're going to be talking to him a lot when you're starting up a new business and putting things in here. Here's all your inspection information, everything that you need to know. Was that all your, did I miss any? Okay.
I missed some important points, thank you.
Okay, and I want to say, so I share many of the concerns that you have, and they've been expressed online. I don't go online. My mom tells me about it. But I, the primary responsibility that the DDA is going to be filling out for the next six months to a year is going to be finding a new director of the DDA. And I have, as I said in our last meeting, I have absolute faith in the DDA Board's ability to seek that out and to find somebody that is going to fill that role and hopefully continue to the, you know, economic vitality that we've experienced in the City of Allen Park. I know that our Human Resources Director, Tanya, has offered assistance to Fred Frank in looking for a new one. I agree, it's not an ideal situation. However, when these things happen, we do the best that we can to make the best out of the situation. So we are going to, the DDA is going to be, continue to be there in all the facets that it is now, and I have absolute faith that they will be finding someone to fill that position, hopefully, so that we can continue in the direction that we've been on.
Time will tell.
Time will tell, indeed. Time will tell, indeed. And I yield.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start by saying thank you for everyone who came today, expressed their opinions on whatever they had, expressed their opinions on, and here to see anyone here. I want to say congrats to the AP softball team. It's exciting to see another championship in our community. It's something I'm definitely getting used to, so it continues for maybe not just Allen Park High School, but Melvindale High School, and also Southgate Anderson, that the city, I kept numerous not mentioned, Inner City or Cabrini. I definitely want to say, I went to the Inner City Baptist fireworks that they had for the community. They were open to whole community, not just those who belonged to that congregation. It was a wonderful event, so thank you to them. Thank you to the DDA about the car show. I thought it was fantastic. I always like going to that event and seeing all the cars that I wish I could own and ask questions about ones that I don't know anything about. So that was fun. And I want to wish everyone a very happy Fourth of July. And keep in mind that there are some members of the community that don't necessarily like the sound of fireworks, so please be cautious of those. In fact, the police department has signs for some folks that have autism that you can put a sign to be aware of that, as well as veterans. So you can pick those up at the police department. And of course, I would be remiss not to mention the birthday of my son, July 5th. He's going to be four years old, so I don't know where four years went, but he's growing up fast. Before I know it, he'll be in high school and out of my house. I love the little guy. Other than that, see you after the Fourth. Have a great Fourth. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Charles?
First off, thank you all for coming to counseling today. Like our council members said, all these events that are happening in our city with DDA Classic Car Show, APCCF had their beer, wine, pizza event, the fireworks at Inner City Baptist Church. So if you're ever like, hmm, what's going on in the city events? We just had Allen Park Today Magazine just mailed out, and if you don't, didn't get one, they have copies in our lobby. And there is an event sheet of all the events happening in our city this year, so please look into that. Same with the Lemonade in the Shade, the concerts in the park, or the parking lot at the Community Center. So many events happening in our city, so, and soon, like Ministry said, the street fair. 40 years, 40 event with that. I want to say, give a shout out to one of our commissioners at the historical, Liz, who recently just resigned at our last meeting, but she's still going to volunteer for the historical. She helped us get a grant for the historical to get a display case. And then I know part of it, they voted to get a new, like a tent for when they have it at the street fair and different events. So again, thank you to Liz for all the work she's done on the Historical Commission. With the Fourth of July, please make sure, as a security guard, safety, when, if you're going to have any sparklers, anything, make sure that, especially if you have kids and they're doing it, make sure you're watching them, take care of that. We do have ordinances, ordinances about the lantern, sky lantern, candle things, whatever you want to call them. Make sure that, don't do those, but with anything with, with fireworks and stuff, just be safe and have a good time. And then lastly, like Joe's comments, prayers, with, we may not agree with everything, but respecting everyone is, at the end of the day, and again, that's democracy. And that's why this, why with politics, just get, and at the end of the day, just respect one another. And as always, with today being the anniversary of Stonewall riots, and Happy Pride Month to all those who celebrate it, and God bless, and stay positive, and I yield.
Thank you, Charles. Mike?
Thank you all for coming out tonight. God bless you and good night.
Well, in lieu of the treasurer not being here, I saw a bunch of tax bills laying on tables, waiting to get folded and put into envelopes, so everyone can expect to begin receiving your summer tax bills soon. I'm sure there'll be something up on the website as far as payments, et cetera. We do want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Wish you all have a safe and happy Independence Day, and give some thought to the real meaning of that day. We should all take some time to learn a little more about the history surrounding this very important day. And just, happy birthday to your son. He is the second person that I know who was born on the Fourth of July. Happy birthday. I'm going to repeat some here. Kudos to the DDA Board members and volunteers who, who helped make the car show a success. Heard a lot of positive comments as I was waving people in and out of the barriers. And we were glad to see so many cars and trucks there, and people just very pleased with what was going on. And I will repeat, special thanks to Lauren Belak and Cindy Rivera, who just really kept the ball rolling and are continuing to keep the programs rolling. Just saw a flyer coming out for Touch a Truck. And so I know that there's things on this upcoming meeting regarding Made in Michigan, so we're moving ahead there. Allen Park Today was mentioned. Again, everybody should have received those by now. If not, the, there are copies available in the lobby. There is a pull-out section, as Charles mentioned, in the middle, that lists all the events for this year, so hang on to that. We've got lots of things going on, both with DDA and the Parks and Recreation Group. Things for adults, things for children. The library has tons of programs. The Historical Commission has programs going on, getting the children involved. So Charles is right, there's, there are a lot of things going on in this community. Dennis mentioned the Safety Town Graduation, which I was able to attend also. Brings back a lot of fond memories of seeing those little kids. Very delightful time. We will be recognizing our state champion softball team and our state champion discus and shot put student at the July 12th council meeting, where we hope to have many in attendance. I understand it may be a little difficult, particularly now for the softball team, because of a lot of the young ladies who are very, very talented, play in a lot of different travel leagues and are all over the place. But I'm, I'm hoping that we can get our, our track and field star here, because the more research I did on this young lady, the more impressed I became. And then I found out that she's also, was at New Balance Nationals, I think about a week ago, where she set another personal best record for the shot put and was named an All-American. So that will also be recognized. One other thing I would like to mention is that there are nominations for Residential and Business Beautification Awards, which I believe are due by June 30th. The city's website has that feature on the face page. If you click on the Beautification Commission Business Beautification Award, that's a link on the main page. You can nominate a neighbor or a business for an award. And with that, thank you all again. Have a safe holiday. I would comment about the drunk drivers, but I get too emotional on that, so I will pass. But please, drinking's fine. Just drink responsibly and don't get behind the wheel. Let someone else drive you. Use Uber. We've, we've lost some people lately. A year ago, I, there was a young lady who used to deliver mine, who's Harold, that was killed by a drunk driver, so no one goes untouched by this. It shouldn't happen. It doesn't need to happen. I think the next concert is tomorrow. There's a concert in the park tomorrow. At the Community Center, right, yeah. Yes, after you have a speech. Works for me. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mr., Blavens, seconded by Mr. Lally. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned at 6:40. Thank you very much.